Good evening, welcome. We'll call this meeting to order, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is a regular Board of Commissioners meeting for the Town of Waxall. I'd invite you all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and to give a moment of silence to give thanks and praise. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Sounds like a no. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as written?
Motion to adopt the agenda?
All in favor. And then the agenda is so adopted. First oral business will be public comments. Just a reminder, public comments are open to the public. And you have three minutes to speak. They can speak on most general topics at this point. Public statements should not include coarse or abusive language. They are to be directed to the Board as a whole and not a single member of the Board or any individual in the audience. This meeting is also an official public proceeding and it is subject to enforcement of meeting interruption laws. So any willful disruption may be mitigated by law enforcement and subject the individual to a class-two misdemeanor. With that being said, we will commence the general public comment section of this meeting. First up, Edwin Elam.
To the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, town commissioners, and each of you. And above all, on behalf of all the citizens of Waxall that don't understand. Watching a recent video due to business travels, I was appalled at the immature rant of one commissioner seated here asking the mayor pro tem, who was she to question the mayor? She was doing her job and the tape clearly shows in asking questions like your cronies do at the theatrics and to no avail at the Union County Board of Commissioners. They run three of you, but then you pretend that you're working for the Town of Waxall. I implore some of you to grow up and stop this red wall collusion and do your jobs for all the citizens. I do my job. I'm doing that right now. It is my job and my right to question our leaders. There is no mandate. We have about eighty to eighty-two percent of lazy voters who've elected many of you. Who needs to stand up and vote again? I know history and government and some of you are not acting in the town's best interest. You are carrying water for those who are colluding with and doing the people's job you are not. I am one of your bosses and I understand what is going on. Some of you are so scared that the numbers will soon be not in your favor that you are actually trying to control government so that you all keep your seats. We need to organize possibly like we did back in the eighteen-sixties, oh, I mean the nineteen-sixties. A small group of people who have taken politics back from those who are trying to oppress them. Sales taxes are down and we understand the reasons why. They are, they are trying to raise the taxes to making us think that it's somebody else's fault. I know why. I've studied the migration for more than thirty years and the facts should shock you. On April the sixteenth, I was at the Union County Board of Commissioners meeting and it was a live meeting. Two of the individuals at this dais was at that meeting. And when the rock star of Waxall, James, and another staffer was making a presentation about the Waxall Parkway, two individuals sitting at this dais was laughing at them when there are no vote came and I couldn't get my camera out fast enough to get the picture. They realized that they can't control the Town of Waxall and if any coalitions happen, they'll be able to turn this red wall around. Because this could change the seating configurations in this county. Finally, as I close, the question is, why are so many so-called ethics people not doing their jobs in government where government is running them up due to the decisions and bad decisions and indecision of some of you, the redwallers? I welcome the feds to study this garbage that we are all getting and that there's no balance in our county at this present time. We need districts so that all people can be represented here at the county level. Finally, as I take my seat, at the next opportunity, voters tear down this wall.
Thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor. Consent agenda is so adopted. Looks like we have a couple of recognitions tonight. I'll introduce our town, Assistant Town Manager Matt Hubert for a recognition of one other town manager.
Good evening. Thank you. I am very pleased to be able to recognize our current Town Manager Jeff Wells for five years of dedicated service to this town. He came in as a planning director and had no idea what lay before him. Few short months in, the Town Manager resigned and moved on and he was the ideal person to step up to the challenge and we're all the better for it. And I am extremely pleased to be able to offer this to Jeff.
Well, as I've told a lot of people, the ICMA, which is the association that we're a part of in the management field, a tenured manager is considered after two years. So that gives you an idea of how challenging this work can be. And I'm just very, very fortunate to have been here now for five years. As Matt said, started out as the Planning Director very shortly after that. Another opportunity came along and I felt compelled to answer that call. Thankfully, the Board thought that I was a good candidate to lead this town. And I can just tell you, this has been such an honor and a privilege to do that. Look forward to coming to work every day. Look forward to working with the Board. Look forward to working with the staff. Just have the most outstanding group of people. It's been truly the best professional experience of my entire career. It's a wonderful community and I just thank, thank the Board, thank the staff, thank the citizens of Waxall. Thank you very much.
And it's certainly my honor to also say thank you, Jeff. You've been doing an outstanding job. Exactly. Well said. Next up, we have Chief Dex Wilson.
Good evening. We're here tonight to recognize Officer Scarphone for five years of service with the Waxall Police Department. Officer Scarphone has been here for five years, but he's been in law enforcement for thirty-five years. So he started his career at NYPD, retired from there in two thousand and nine, moved to North Carolina, then went to Hill Police Department, stayed there for ten years. And then in two thousand and nineteen, he came to Waxall where he's been with us since. So he's a master patrol officer here as well as he does animal control and community services. He also does SRO at the two schools whenever needed to take the position there. So without Officer Scarphone, we really couldn't do our day-to-day operations and we appreciate his service. So congratulations, sir.
I would just like to thank the town for having me for the past five years and I don't plan on going anywhere.
Thank you for your dedication. Next up, we'll bring Matt Hubert back. Looks like. Is it Dina? This is different than. Looks like we have an introduction of a new employee. I'll bring up Dina Sabinski.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to pleasantly welcome Ms. Melissa Johnson. She is joining the Park and Rec team as the Deputy of Recreation. She comes with a wealth of knowledge of over ten years' experience with program, events, and facility management. And we kind of stole her from Matthews, which I'm still saying sorry to them for a little bit. But she has jumped in with both feet. She's survived her first event over the weekend with kaleidoscope and opening up the park. So I'd like to say hello, say hello to Ms. Melissa and we're glad to have her. And if you see her out in the community, please say hello to her.
Hello.
Just want to say thank you so much. Thanks for having me. I appreciate how welcoming the whole town has been. And I actually live in Waxall, so I'm excited to serve the community where I live and where my kids are growing up. So thank you so much.
Welcome home then.
Mayor, may I say real quickly, having worked with Melissa and Matthews, two weeks ago I was shedding dears when she lived. But for her to be in Waxall, it's a bright day in Waxall.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now we have Assistant Town Manager Matt Hubert once more.
Thank you. I remember where this was. Do we have a proclamation to display for our tea? I do have the honor of introducing the proclamation for support of National Public Works Week. It's a time to celebrate those that provide and maintain the infrastructure and services advancing and enhancing our quality of life in our communities. The Town of Waxall recognizes and honors the Waxall Public Services Team for their exemplary work in planning, building, and management of local communities that keep our town running smoothly day in and day out. We celebrate the Town of Waxall's Public Service Department during Public Works Week on May nineteenth through May twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-four. And the recommended action here is to adopt proclamation in support of National Public Works Week. And also, this outstanding team, I mean, when you drive through Waxall, you know it's, it's been kept up with great attention to the detail. Todd came with the town, I think. His team work effortlessly and tirelessly to ensure that everything gets done when it needs to get done. And we, I couldn't be more proud of this team and what they do for the town.
It certainly says a lot when we've had the recent weather events, I think last week in particular. No roads have been closed and I haven't seen any trees laying in the roads like I have in other places. So definitely a testament to the commitment of our Public Works Team. So you guys do a bang-up job. Thank you. Would you like to step forward, Todd? Show us your team? Come on down, guys. Don't be shy.
I'm on server one tonight. I can't say enough about these guys. I mean, I'll put them up against any public works in, you know, in North Carolina, any municipality. I was telling commissioners the other day at lunch, we got two sayings down there. If you can't do it, you can't work here. Because there's nothing these guys can't do or they won't try to do. I'm proud of them. Call us. He keeps it straight all the time. That's a handful. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Can I get a motion to adopt proclamation two zero two four zero zero eight?
I'll make a motion to adopt proclamation two zero two four zero zero eight in support of National Public Works Week on May nineteen through May twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-four.
All in favor.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a public hearing. We have a couple items. Can I get a motion to open a public hearing in regards to, yeah, can I just get a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
All in favor. First up will be a conditional rezoning for the DeWitt property.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Lisa Thompson. I'm the Planning Director for the town. I am here tonight to present application C D zero zero four, two thousand and twenty-four. It's a request by the Wide Waters Group for a conditional zoning for twenty-four point one seven acres. This is the southeast side of the Waxall Parkway. To orient you to the site, you have Providence Road running north and south and then Waxall Parkway is east and west. The current zoning is in purple. It's Employment Center. You have Employment Center to the north and to the east. You have R three, single-family residential to the south. In brown is Neighborhood Center. That's the Blythe Mill Town Home Project. And then to the west is C C Corridor Commercial. The applicant is requesting conditional zoning, which is a site-specific development plan with the ability to place conditions on the plan. The proposed development contains three hundred and twelve multifamily units. Ground floor multifamily units is allowed through a conditional zoning approval process. To the west side of the property is fifty-four thousand square feet of commercial. The site plan, development standards, and related graphics make up the proposed zoning district. Only, only minor alterations are allowed. Waxall's traffic consultant, Kimberly Horn, has prepared a traffic impact analysis, T I A, to determine required transportation improvements within the study area. Based on the analysis performed, the applicant would be required to build half of the length of the Waxall Parkway from N C sixteen to Waxall Indian Trail Road. They would be required to put a new signal in at N C sixteen and Waxall Parkway and then a payment in lieu for a portion of added trips to N C sixteen at Highway seventy-five. The proposed elevations are up on the screen. The applicant would have to meet the design standards outlined in Chapter Six if approved. And since this is a conditional zoning, these conditions have to be approved by both the applicant and the town in writing. So these are the applicant's proposed conditions. I'll quickly run through those. Number one is to allow permitted uses not only in the Employment Center zoning but also in the N C or C C zoning districts. A lot of the Employment Center uses are more towards light manufacturing and jobs, office parks. So they're asking for the retail component for their shopping center. We are asking that no residential uses are allowed on that retail portion of the plan. Number two is the parking ratio for multifamily. Our code, our ordinance requires two spaces per unit. They had asked for one point five. After going through Planning Board, we compromised at one point six five. Number three, they're asking that the requirement of commercial use being established prior to residential be waived. Number four, due to the site constraints, the width of the property on the western side, they're asking for a twenty-foot front yard setback that is consistent with our commercial corridor setbacks. It's twenty feet. Number five is to have both plans go through this process. There's an easement running east-west through the project. If that easement goes away, there's potential for more parking in the residential portion. Number six is that the ultimate parkway alignment and pavement section be determined at the construction plan phase. And then seven, again, all elevations have to meet the design criteria of Chapter Six. Planning Board considered the case on April sixteenth. Concerns were raised about the ultimate parkway right-of-way width, the reduced setbacks on the commercial component, parking, the commercial to residential ratio, and the inability to move the commercial forward given the easement running through the property. The Planning Board unanimously recommended denial. With any rezoning, we have to be, we have to look at our land use plan. The two thousand and sixteen land use plan designates the site as mixed use. This designation is for a mixture of commercial and residential uses in the area that are located along major transportation routes or strategically located to function as the center of a neighborhood. Allowed uses include a wide range of retail and general service uses, mixture of housing types including apartments, townhomes, duplexes, small lot, single family. Tonight, we are not looking for a decision. This is just the public hearing. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And then Scott Stone with American Engineering and the applicant Eric Candy with Wide Waters is here to do a quick presentation as well.
Any questions from the Board?
Quick question. Has the easement issue been resolved as of today?
Not to my knowledge, no.
A couple of questions I had. To what degree is the parkway being completed? And I preface that with, it's my understanding the parkway is supposed to be a divided, single lane with right-of-way to be two lanes in both directions. So to what degree would they be building? What would their version of the parkway look like, in other words?
Sure. There is about a hundred and fifty feet of existing right-of-way. So we would ask the applicant to provide a two-lane section from east to west to the end of their, their property. It's unknown whether we need the four lanes right-of-way, so we'll probably stick with the two-lane section for now. But once the, the area is built out, the ultimate goal is for, for four-lane section with a divided median.
And will there be adequate space then for sidewalks and bicycle trails, basically, or bike paths?
They're wood lanes. Yep.
And then on the parking question, they were pushing for one point five. Is that based, is, is the justification for one point five parking spots per unit predicated on an urban standard or a rural standard?
Yeah, our, our ordinance requires two and I've, from looking at other ordinances, that is high. I'm not sure if one and a half is enough, but they're providing about one point six five per unit with the garages. If that easement goes away, there's potential of parking in this area as well.
Any other questions?
One more question, I'm sorry. In one of the slides, you said they've asked us to not wave something. Can you repeat that?
Yes, so our Employment Center zoning says exclusive housing developments will not be considered until non-residential uses are well-established in the Employment Center. So they're asking to be able to do the residential portion first.
And do they have any idea when the commercial would come, how many years down the line that would be?
I'll let them answer that. They're coming up for a presentation, so.
Well, that's similar to what my question was. I, I thought the L D C was written that the commercial had to be established before the residential was built. So I saw on your list there of one of your slides back then. Can you go back to that? Where it says that it will not be established.
Yes, number three.
Number three. So the commercial will, so there shall not be a requirement to be established. Well, that's completely against how our L D C is written. So what is the reasoning? Is this, is this a recommendation by you? This list?
No, this is the applicant's conditions. The town would have to agree to these in writing.
Okay.
These are their desired conditions.
Correct.
And we would have to agree to each one of these?
Yep.
Basically, these deviations from the current code.
So I, yeah, I'd like to hear clarification on that, too.
The open space in the center between the commercial and the residential, is that usable open space? Or is it just sort of a pond that's not always a pond?
Yeah, we have a requirement that a percentage of the open space be usable. So they would have to build some kind of greenway or walking trail around the pond to make that a usable, a usable amenity. They also have the trail running along the south boundary of the property as well.
So based on our one thirty-fifth of an acre requirement, are they satisfying that or are they requesting fee and lieu?
So that ordinance is written for major subdivisions. Because this is multifamily, it is not required to have that parkland fee and lieu requirement.
Any other questions? Okay. Do we want to open up to public comment then at this point or was there more to present?
The applicant had a presentation.
Okay.
Pull that up.
Wait for the, wait for it to go. And throughout the, the few slides we had, we will address each of the, some of the questions that were brought up earlier. So you've already seen this and essentially the, the, if you look at the spot in the middle, that is, there's, there's kind of a deep ravine. There's a lot of topographic slope and a creek that runs in the middle of that. So it makes for a kind of a natural divide between uses and it kind of drove a lot of the overall process, the entire process. So a few things about the E C zoning district. My recollection back and perhaps others can also add some additional clarification. But when the E C zoning district was created in this area, it was not exclusive to this individual parcel. As you can see, it was, it was a lot of other parcels that we're going to show you a little bit more in a second. It was, there was an anticipation that it was going to be a broader area and then just this barren tract, which is twenty-four acres. So the, the goals were to look at it as a, as a broader, ideally master plan. But as you can imagine, getting nine different parcels and three different property owners all together to figure out how the timing and the exact determination of how it's going to lay out and what the master plan would be, makes it difficult to, to do that. So Wide Waters really can only do what they, they can do on their parcel. What this does do, the, the E C zoning, what it was intended to do and does do is facilitate some connectivity through creating the parkway, facilitating that parkway and encourages that future land use that would not just be residential. I know there was a lot of concern that, that we, that the town wasn't establishing enough commercial uses. So this would have done that. It was looking at a long-term plan for that five hundred acres and the goal was also to establish commercial, like I said, not a one-supposed parcel. The recent discussions of the, the E C requiring the commercial coming first and having that built on a individual parcel coming first, this is something that's come up only really in the last few weeks. For the last, really almost a year that, that our, that Wide Waters have been talking about this with staff and with the town. That wasn't really the discussion that they had to do commercial first because it just doesn't make the, the site practical. Now, they are commercial developers and I'm going to talk a little more. Now, they are commercial developers, you know, we'll talk a little more about that in a second, but the intent of the ordinance is, I always understood it and as I read it and as I heard about it at the time that it was being passed, was that to ensure that it was not going to be all residential. There is a general rule of thumb of twenty-five percent, but that's not written anywhere. That's just kind of what staff and, and others had said is a good rule of thumb. So that way, there is not all residential. The other thing that's important to keep in mind in this is that the Southern People's Community College was supposed to have a facility, uh, constructed. It was, you know, the taxpayers of Union County voted for a bond to build that facility. And it was supposed to go basically right across this property. That would have kick-started the employment zone, um, zoning, the, the employment center zoning would have created those initial jobs. And unfortunately, because the Union County Board of Commissioners decided to, to pull in that sewer line, um, that, that impacted whether or not the, the SBCC could build there. To highlight, Wide Waters wants to do commercial here. They just can't control when they're going to have a tenant. So you cannot build the road with just the commercial on the left, on the west side. You've got to have the residential in order to be able to afford to build the road. They are the same developer that is doing Prescott Village that had sit empty for ten years. Uh, they bought it out of bankruptcy and now there's loads of foods coming there and that's well on its way to being approved and construction starting. So they certainly want to do construction there. Uh, the question is, when will there be tenants? We can guarantee that there will never be commercial there if there's no road there because there's no way for anyone to get to it and it's very difficult to have, um, very difficult to have any kind of commercial traffic there without, without the road there first, so. So that's the kind of chicken and the egg that exists there. Wide Waters also putting, not only putting in, you know, a significant amount of the parkway and the traffic signal that will impact, uh, possibly the traffic here, but also there's a significant off-site sewer connection that they're going to have to put in place. So these are not insignificant costs that, that they're putting in. And one other thing that they mentioned too, and you'll see throughout the slides, is the irregular shape is going to, there's a few different things that come up with the irregular shape. It just makes for an awkward parcel, uh, to be able to do, do many things with. Just a few quick numbers, this is only twenty-four acres out of five hundred and three total acres that's of, of all these nine parcels. You're only looking at this little piece, this one parcel is only three, three and a half percent of, of, of five hundred and three acres. But they're building more than half of that section of parkway that would benefit all five hundred and three acres. So, uh, that's a pretty significant, uh, not just cost, but, uh, but, you know, willingness that they're, that, that Wide Waters will do. Want to talk about a few different things that this project will bring from a connectivity standpoint, both the traffic and pedestrian. You see the different road networks there. The dash lines of, in purple would be the future parkway. There's already the existing parkway on that, uh, upper northwest side. So this would carry, you know, a big chunk of what's left to be built between Robbins Road and, uh, Waxside Indian Trail Road. And then you look at all the other connection points that are there. The goal is really, has been twenty-five years to build this parkway and there's been very little progress made, uh, up until the last, you know, really couple of years when there's already, there's finally starting to be some momentum for that. So this, this would help with that. Um, again, I mentioned twenty years, you only, you've had less than a mile done of the nine miles that was the original parkway. So this is adding half a mile of that, of that nine miles, so, uh, pretty significant. And it's coming at no taxpayer, you know, impact. Pedestrian corridors are significant, too. We're going to show you a little bit in seconds of the, uh, uh, you know, there's a walking trail, multi-use path on the south side of the property as well as the sidewalk that'd be on the north side of the property. Those would eventually connect into parcels to the east and then eventually would also connect in with the future greenway, um, that's part of the, the park's overall plan. So between the sidewalks, the trail system, this adds a lot of additional connectivity and it ties into the, uh, connections for the sidewalks and the linear parks that are just to the south of this property, uh, Blithe Mill Estates, it's under construction right now. Um, there has been just some discussion about connecting to the south. The neighbors to, immediately to the south and, and the, uh, where Blithe Mill comes up, they very specifically did not want a connection in. Wide Waters doesn't want a connection in because it's not, taking a road through the middle of a parking lot basically is not ideal. Plus it would cross over the multi-use path that's going to go along this other part of the property. There's also a lot of other, you know, connection points that, that will come through. This is the, uh, the proposed residential that, uh, you know, on the apartment side and then down below is the, the commercial side. Now, the commercial side could be a lot of different uses as, as Lisa said, there, it could be retail, it could be a lot of different things, it could be office. It really is going to depend on the, on the tenants. You don't know what the market's going to be, it ain't given time. So we're, we're really waiting for what the market's going to dictate. So, I mean, I'm going to go back and I want to address a couple, the very first slide, a couple of the questions that came up on the, uh, in, in the earlier session, on the right-of-way and the setbacks and some of the other things. So on the, um, at the very top, you can see the existing parkway that's under, that's already been built. It's a hundred and twenty feet of right-of-way, or really, there's more than that now. That's public right-of-way that's already there now. And there was questions during the planning board whether or not you could fit four lanes plus turn lanes and sidewalks. If you think about, you wouldn't know, you could essentially fit ten lanes worth of traffic. You're not going to have ten lanes of traffic and you never need ten lanes of traffic, but between turn lanes, the, the, the four lanes of traffic, median sidewalks, there is more than enough room in the, in the existing, um, you know, right-of-way that's already public right-of-way, uh, for where the parkway is going to go. Uh, the other element that we brought up was the setbacks and if, if really we're, we're looking for a reduction of the setback, front setback and it wouldn't impact anything with turn lanes or the right-of-way, it's really just from the setback from the property line, which is outside of the right-of-way. It's because of this irregular shape, it gets pinched in. And if you didn't have the reduction setback, you wouldn't be able to do much commercial there because it just pinches in, uh, so much. So that, want to mention that. Uh, the parking counts, Wide Waters really, their goal is typically for, for a multifamily like this would be one point seven, spaces per, per unit. And, you know, one point five is what we were originally talking about, but our current plan, this, this layout has one point six eight, I think is what the number is, but they would love to get to one point seven. I think staff would, um, would prefer us to be, you know, on a lower number in part because of the impervious area that it creates with all the parking. So it's a balance of, of trying to be accommodated to the, you know, to create more green space, but also make sure you have enough parking. Wide Waters, who does this in other markets, uh, certainly want a higher traffic, or higher parking count just to make sure you accommodate that. And I'm not sure if there was any other questions related to the, oh, the easement. So the easement, I'm going to show it on this screen here, if we get this in the prime picture. So the easement that was discussed basically comes across here and comes up here. So the easement is currently owned by, by, uh, the entity that, that basically controls all the, the land up to the north, which is the Tyson family in Typar. Wide Waters had some really good conversations very recently with, with Typar and very close to an agreement to have, have that easement abandoned because quite frankly, once this road's built, you don't, this easement is, is really, there's nothing needed with this easement when you have a road up in front. So, uh, as recently as, as the last day or two, uh, they're, they've continued to have very productive conversations and so the easement issue should, should take care of itself, uh, even very soon.
Does the easement go through where the commercial is?
It does.
Right in the middle?
Correct.
And what if you don't get it?
Well, then you're going to have the exact same situation you have now. You have, you have an easement going through a piece of property that you can, you can never build commercial on. So, it's, you're going to, you're going to, if, if the easement does go away, you're not going to have commercial there whether, whether Wide Waters does this part of this development or somebody else does it in the future. Because it, it's, you can't do that without getting rid of the easement.
But you're asking us to approve something without an easement yet that goes through the commercial that we so desperately need to change our ratio?
Correct. But you're, so, so to your point, though, the easement that's there now, it's, it's needed if the road doesn't get built. So that's one of the big, big, you know, it's a chicken and the egg kind of situation there. If it's, this is only commercial, then you, this deal doesn't work, uh, to be able to build that road, the expensive section road without that multifamily. Um, and the other part of this is the commercial, you look, are we, this is, this is a request for land use and Wide Waters would like to do the easement, or I'm sorry, would like to do the commercial as quick as possible. It doesn't do them any good to have a piece of property that they have to purchase and build on if they've got half of the site basically sitting there vacant. So they've got to have, you know, to maximize their development opportunity, they, they want to have the commercial.
And assuming you get the easement, how, how far out are we looking at commercial?
Depends on, on the market. If it could be, you know, where, it could be as quick as the residential theoretically, but there's also a lot of other properties in town that are, you know, Wide Waters is already marketing other properties in town, Prescott Village, that are, that are retail and commercial, you know, commercial offices and so forth. So it, it creates momentum in that space. If, if you don't pass this rezoning, it's going to sit there for a long time.
Well, I guess I'm asking, you're going to do the residential first?
We're asking, we're asking to.
That's what you're asking for?
For the ability to do it first.
The ability to do it first. And then you're saying it will depend on market value for the commercial? What if the market value tanks? Does that mean that you're not doing any commercial?
Then you're going to have the same situation you have now, it's going to sit there empty anyway. You're no further behind than you are now.
I don't know about that, but.
Well, I mean, you can't have, how, how do you have commercial without the market driving? I mean, you can't require tenants and retailers to come and build the facility. You can't force anybody to do that. So they could build, yeah, they could build the offices theoretically, but they'll sit, sit empty if the market's not there to, to fill in the tenants. So, but there, this isn't the only piece of property that is currently available for commercial. There is, there's a lot of other property that is currently available. So this creates momentum, it creates traffic on that parkway to, to be able to drive up traffic counts to, to encourage commercial to come.
But I didn't, still don't hear a number, an approximate years on what we're looking at.
If you can tell me what's going to happen over the next year or two in terms of the market, then we.
Well, how long will it take you to build the residential?
Well, the residential, we already know the market's there today.
Correct, and how long will that take?
Oh, the actual construction, what do we, I mean, you'll start pretty quickly.
Uh, Eric with Wide Waters, um, so residential on something like that might take a little less than two years. But once that activity comes in off Providence Road and we actually build that road, obviously it's going to create more activity along there, so it's not going to take, right? We've done this in other markets, Indian Land, uh, we build that residential, the tenants start to see those buildings go up and then that creates the desire from those tenants to be there. Um, I mean, as Scott alluded to, we are doing Prescott Village Blows. We actually had this site under contract before, showed it to retailers and without the road, there was no interest.
So what would be your trigger then for the commercial? You know, what are you looking for at the residential?
Sure, yeah. So, I mean, we have our own in-house leasing, um, I mean, I, I don't do that personally, but we've got a guy who's just responsible for the southeast for us. He leases all of our, um, space. So as soon as we got this rezoned, we knew we could actively put it out on the market, we would be actively marketing for lease. And just say the easement is gone and we get a tenant, then we would start building it then, right? I mean, we want to, we want to build this, we're just like we're building Prescott, uh, Village.
Are you saying that the percentage of the residential leased before you would start on the commercial? I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, we'd want to at least have some of the, right? So right now, in, as Scott alluded to, right now we're just showing kind of, I'll call it fictitious buildings, right? They're just rectangles. Um, and we showed the renderings that we had there, which is pretty typical of what we provide. Um, could be even a two-story office, which is actually how we got to some of that square footage, was two, some of those were two-story, right? So if we had a, a tenant that wanted five thousand square feet while we're leasing that, we would work to build that space out.
I think, Commissioner, I want to clarify, so I think your question is, what would, what, what on the leasing of the multifamily residential would then trigger the commercial, is that your question? So there, to me, I think they're completely separate, they're separate pieces. The commercial's going to be driven by the, by the commercial market and the tenants that are coming there. The residential is going to build out and, you know, they're going to continue to build those buildings as shown. And those, they're, they're hopefully, there's going to be good leasing activity on the residential. They're two separate, if one does not trigger the other, the commercial's going to be triggered by the market for the commercial uses.
Essentially, you would have commercial, uh, folks wanting to use a commercial space coming to you? Is what you're saying?
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
But they can't really speak to the commercial use because they haven't, um, satisfied the easement. So we can't even do the what-if about commercial because the commercial may never come if they don't get the easement.
Well, as we mentioned, the, the discussions with Typar have been, um, up in really even the last couple of days, there's been ongoing conversations and we feel like we're pretty close. Uh, if possible, maybe even before, before the next vote happening, we feel the easement's satisfied. So we, uh, that's been very productive.
Would all this be owned and managed then by Wide Waters or?
Yeah, that's right. So, um, we as an entity, Wide Waters, we would manage and retain ownership. Um, and you can, you know, look on our website, we've owned things for, you know, fifty years that we've been around. Uh, we don't sell. So we maintain, uh, management of the commercial part. We manage that ourselves because that's actually where we really started as a company was on the commercial side. In the residential, we don't manage that in-house, but we hire the likes of, you know, all the names you'll see around, Gray Star, Bell.
So there's no opportunity for a local business owner or a local individual to capitalize on the wonderful world of real estate? Because this will all be owned by Wide Waters?
Yes, all, all of the land and the real estate would be owned by Wide Waters. Providing no local opportunity for growth and ownership.
Well, Mayor Whitson, you're, what would be a scenario where if someone local would be a partner in this or?
Uh, there are many business owners that would love to own the building they're renting with their business.
So you're saying for the office piece?
Office piece as well as the residential. These are not condominiums, they're not condominium offices, they're not condominium apartments either. So this will all be kept, maintained, retained by Wide Waters.
Which I would say in the, in the general area in the Charlotte region, I'd say that's the vast majority of multifamily is.
And that doesn't necessarily make it desirable. So I'm just pointing out something that is lacking in the area, is an area for a business owner to invest in their own future by buying their own real estate or their own business. And that's not something that'll be available here.
Interesting. Speaking of the rendering side, this is an issue that came up in the planning board meeting. Uh, the picture of the apartments, it looks like four levels, but, um, isn't the plan actually six levels?
So I believe, and Lisa and maybe even Scott knows better than I do, but the, um, LDC allows up to six stories, which, I mean, we're getting approved or seeking approval for three hundred and twelve units, um, on just four stories. Um, and that's all we would do. Um, you know, going up to five and six levels is a whole different construction type, which we wouldn't want to get into.
And if you added, so the, the plan, the, if you looked at the, the site plan, that assumes four levels and the number of units assumes four levels. To add another level, you'd have to add the, the parking that goes with it, which frankly just wouldn't be able to fit in. So you're really constrained not just the ordinance allows it to go higher, but you're really constrained with the site to go, to go in there and set it. But you're captain, you were, the proposal is three hundred and twelve units, so that gets you in.
And we would honestly have no interest in doing six level, five levels even, so.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. So at this point, we have public comments. Pam Murphy, again, previous rules apply, three minutes, keep it clean.
That was quite a presentation, I'm Pam Murphy of Waxahau, I'm just a resident. Um, my neighborhood does back up to the parkway, so I'm personally affected by what goes there. So many years ago, we fought to keep, you know, um, the big box store out of there because they were going to build, finish building the road. So here we hear it again, we're getting another sales pitch to finish, you know, finish the road that doesn't go anywhere. But yeah, um, you know, they're going to make it look nice. And personally, I think, and I counted seven of those buildings, I don't know how many apartment buildings, but it's not very attractive. I don't think that's what I envision Waxahau looking like. And what I wanted to, you know, what I really wanted to say was, I looked up the, the zoning for economic corridor. And, um, you know, I try to do my homework, this is very, very complicated and I can't find my piece of paper now, but there's, um, a lot of things that are allowed in that area, like, you know, the commercial thing. There's pages and pages and pages of things that can be built in that area. that can be built in that area. But when it comes to, you know, multifamily dwelling, you have to have special permit to build there. But all the other ones are permitted. So I'm not sure why we're all of a sudden, you know, building resident in an area where we need commercial. We need commercial businesses and employers and, and you talk about the ratio. But what I want to just remind everybody that when you look at the North Carolina regulations and it talks about your zoning, so we're already zoned DC and they're asking you to change that. They're asking you to change the percentages to flip it upside down, put more houses in than businesses. The zoning regulation shall be in accordance with a comprehensive plan and they are designed to promote the public health, safety and general welfare. They're to prevent overcrowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population, to lessen congestion in the streets and to secure safety from fire panic dangers, to facilitate efficient and adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks and other requirements, and to promote the health, safety morals or general welfare of the community. And that's what I'm charging you with. When you, when you look at these and they come up with their, you know, their fancy sales pitches, think about what Waxaw is, why that is zoned DC, what we vision that as a community. And we need to stick to our guns and make sure that that happens. And maybe not now, but in the future. They're already saying they probably won't be able to build commercial there. If you don't think that that's appropriate for that, then maybe we should rezonate. But that's what, you know, that's what is on the plan. And I think that's what we should stick to. And I think we should vote no for any apartment buildings in that area. And I have the same concern when you get to Emerson. I think we should look at the zoning we have. There's a reason we put it there. And we shouldn't be changing it and approving all of these zoning changes just to make developers happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mary Lou Raymond.
That little presentation just totally kind of threw me because with the DeWitt, I thought a lot of what you guys, I have a script, but now I'm going off it. I thought that the commercial was why a lot of you guys wanted these. That's why the Graham property got voted and got voted in, because the forty acres, 40 acres, 50 acres of the employment center, which he admitted he's not gonna do for five to eight years. Now you have this DeWitt telling you the same thing. So it's all this growth for all this, you know, residential, residential. And it sounds to me like they don't even know what they're doing. They can't promise you anything. They haven't, anything is not set in stone. Again, just like with Graham, it's not set in stone. It's like, well, we think we're gonna do this. We think we're gonna do that. Well, if the market bears it, the market might not bear it. We could look at 10, 15 years down the road and you won't have that commercial, but we'll have more growth. But we'll have more citizens crowding the schools, crowding the roads. There's gonna be over a thousand homes between the Emerson and the DeWitt feeding out onto Providence Road, right here, right over there by the post office. How can we do that without those road widening, without Ray Road being done? Now they're asking for us a bond referendum now. Union County Public School for 2024 to go on so that they can build a new parkwood because there's not enough schools. And they can't even put more kids in Cuthbertson, in Marvin Ridge, because they're at capacity. The growth, you know, all we're at, and I'm for the wall. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm all for what they're trying to do. And I'm on Facebook all the time drilling it because Waxaw's gone. It's already gone. But it doesn't have to be worse than what it is now. I, I want to ask you, I want you guys to address where you think those 2,000 cars or all those kids, thousand homes. And then you say you want commercial, but the commercial's not coming with all this residential. So I don't understand why you keep approving it. I pray you don't approve this, you know, and look at it. Because it makes no sense, especially when you've got developers who aren't even giving you a rock hard, solid plan for something. Oh, we could do six stories, but it's only four on this. Your planning board is not even in favor of these, these, these developments, these projects. They said they're not in favor. Are you listening to your own planning board? I will be up again for the DeWitt or for the Emerson. All I'm asking you is some common sense. If you want the commercial, fine, then wait till they can give you the commercial. Don't give them all the residential without the commercial.
Thank you. Next up is part of our public hearings.
If I may for a moment, I, I think this would be helpful for clarification in what the ordinance says and the intent, because I'm, I'm the one who wrote it. So what it, what it says is exclusive, exclusive housing developments will not be considered until non-residential uses are well-established in the employment center. So the intent of that would be, for example, if, if that request was just the multifamily and it did not have the other commercial component, that would be considered an exclusive development request on that one parcel. And that was the intent, would not be to consider that. But because it adds the commercial component to it, it's not just an exclusive residential request. So that was the, that was the idea.
What did you mean by well-established though?
Well, the purpose of that is to be vague so that you can pick and choose between what you determine to be a good project or not.
But with the DeWitt, which they just spoke about, we do not have the commercial intent to be well-established because there's an easement that's preventing that from being well-established with their use in their project.
Well, that is correct. Yes, there are complexities there, but that's just the broad as far as the overall. But certainly does not go into the details involved. But that's the intent.
Thank you, Jeff. Anything else? Okay. We'll go ahead and proceed to the next item of the public hearing. We have Madison Miller to present on Emerson Park.
Good evening, everyone. I am before you today to present the conditional rezoning request called Emerson Park. This is a petition by the applicant Jones Home USA for a conditional rezoning request for four properties totaling 111 acres. This is known as the Howie Farm Parcel adjacent to our downtown. It's gonna include 759 units of residential and then over 121,000 square feet of commercial. To get you situated to the site, it is currently a farm and a zoned TC along North Broom Street and then R4 about midway all the way to Waxaw Marvin Road. To the north are commercially zoned properties along the Waxaw Parkway. To the east are vacant TC zone parcels north of Blythe Mill and then the existing Waxaw Animal Hospital, which is also zoned TC. To the east and also south are the residents along Peyton Court and then Bivin Street and then the Waxaw Mills Apartments, which are zoned employment center. And then across from Waxaw Marvin are CC zone parcels, which include the dog boarding facility and then our own rec barn. To the west is the Harrison Park Neighborhood zoned R3 and then the up and coming project known as Villages of Waxaw, which is zoned R4. So this proposed development is for multifamily, townhomes and single-family detached, along with commercial uses, which will be part of this mixed-use development request. So in total, they are requesting 759 residential units, 420 are multifamily, 220 townhomes, 103 single-family detached, 16 live-work units, which will be located in the commercial area, and then 121,000 square feet of commercial retail. And so to get you situated to the site, the purple is the commercial area along North Broom Street. The multifamily is situated adjacent to the commercial in this quadrant with townhomes further to the south. And then the entire southern portion is single-family detached and townhomes. So the primary entrance for this development will be aligned with Blythe Mill on North Broom Street, which is here, and then a southern connection to Waxaw Marvin Road here. There will be adjacent connections to North Broom Street, a stub for a future connection to North Jackson. And then they are doing a pedestrian connection to Peyton Court. And then they are stubbing into the Village of Waxaw Development, as you can see here. And then finally, they are doing a driveway connection to the Allen Lindsey Center, which fronts Waxaw Parkway. So Waxaw's traffic consultant, Kimberly Horn, has conducted a transportation impact analysis or traffic impact analysis for this project to require the transportation improvements within the study area. Data has been collected to ensure that the traffic generated from this site are sufficiently mitigated. So within this TIA, they have identified 19 intersections for mitigation. And with us today is Brady Finkley with Kimberly Horn. He will give a presentation, right, a broad overview of the traffic improvements and then can dive further in with questions if those arise. So when we look at development, the LDC requires squares, parks and then other forms of common open space intended to design and further the character of a project. With this proposal, they are required to provide 15.71 acres of open space and they are providing 26.14 acres of open space. And so that meets the requirements for R4 and then for the TC zone portion of it. So accessible recreation spaces may take the form of trails, parks, plazas and community gardens. So as a part of their request, if you can follow my point here on the screen, our pedestrian plan outlines what we call Sunny's Way. So they are building .6 miles of this trail, which will include a 10-foot paved trail and then continues onto a 10-foot multi-use path. So there will be future pedestrian access from Waxaw Parkway to Waxaw Marvin Road. In addition, they are connecting to the 10-foot paved trails of the Villages of Waxaw, which can be seen here. And then in addition, they are providing five-foot crush-and-run trail in the interior of the site that the HOA will maintain. And so the town requires a parkland dedication or fee-in lieu for recreational purposes. And so they are required to donate 1/35th of an acre for each unit in a major subdivision. And so since it's only for those units for a major subdivision, that's 323 units, which equals a dedication of 9.23 acres for a park. They are dedicating 4.66 acres to the town for park space and then we'll do a fee-in lieu for the remainder. And then the fee-in lieu is by state statute is by the fair market value at final plat, which is at the end of the development process. A 25-foot residential buffer is required around the residential portion of the site and where trees are being disturbed as one of their conditions, they will replace and replant to our buffer standard. In addition to street trees, each single-family detached and attached unit will provide one front lot tree and then two trees in the side and rear yard. So this proposed development is required to preserve 30% of the existing tree canopy, which equals 22.68 acres. They are proposing 11.63 acres in tree save and they will work with town staff and the urban forester to replant and reforest the other 11 acres. This is also one of the conditions for the site. These are the conceptual elevations for the single-family detached and townhomes. These are included as part of their vision book, which is a part of the conditional zoning plan. And they will also be required to follow our Chapter Six Design Standards for Residential. Here are the conceptual elevations for the multifamily. Bless you. And then additional conceptual elevations for the retail. And also with us is the applicant who will give further details and further illustrations of their project as well after Brady has given his presentation. State law mandates that zoning be undertaken in accordance with a comprehensive plan and that of a consistency statement that must be prepared and approved for every zoning amendment. With this submittal being received in the middle of 2023, this request will review the Waxaw 2016 comp plan and the Waxaw 2021 land use map, which are shown on the screen. The 2016 comp plan designates this area as G3 Intended Growth Sector and divides the property as mixed-use along the front edge of Broom Street and then residential on the remaining portion. This designation is intended for properties along major thoroughfares with access to utilities and the availability to build a more intense urban development pattern. This land lies within the 12 Mile Creek Basin where sewer service is either available or nearby and is either surrounded by or immediately adjacent to more intensive development. As part of those designations, the mixed-use provides for a mixture of commercial and residential uses in the area that are located along these major transportation routes. Uses include a wide variety of retail and general services and a mixture of housing, including apartments, townhomes and small lot, single-family. The residential portion of that designation is intended to provide a mixture of housing types set in a walkable neighborhood setting. And those uses include detached, single-family, cottage housing, townhomes and apartments. The 2021 Future Land Use Map designates it as downtown and then medium-density residential in the yellow. Downtown is intended for a mix of retail, office, light manufacturing and limited residential to maintain the historical and architectural identity of Waxaw. The medium-density residential provides a density consistent with that of the surrounding neighborhoods found throughout the town. And that density is typical of three to five units per acre. It really likes this slide. So at the April Planning Board, they unanimously gave a unfavorable recommendation to you guys and an unfavorable consistency statement stating that it is not consistent with the 2021 land use plan. So we are in the conditional rezoning phase of this process where we're at the public hearing and then at your next meeting will be the board decision. Upon approval, it will go through a construction plan process where we disseminate to additional staff, to our technical review committee, which includes all these outside agencies. And then the final step, when they subdivide the land, that will go through our final plat process outlined on the screen as well. So your potential action for May 28th are listed on the screen and then I will go over the conditions as well. Condition number one is that multifamily dwelling units shall be permitted as ground floor in the town center zone areas. 11 acres of the tree save shall be mitigated in coordination with us, our Union County Urban Forester and then an arborist of their choosing. Enhanced screening and buffering shall be provided along the property line of Peyton Court residents. And then the 25-foot buffer in some areas will be cleared for grading purposes. And then that buffer will be replanted per, replanted per our town spec. And then the final condition, two-to-one slopes will be permitted only in areas where tree preservation is to be maximized. And then the final condition, two to one slopes will be permitted only in areas where tree preservation is to be maximized. This is a, or a consistency statement which you guys will consider at your next meeting. Any questions or comments? Um, and just again, uh, Brady will, will follow me with a presentation on the traffic. And then the applicant and their team are here and will give a brief presentation after that.
What, um, what's the land currently zoned at?
So the land is currently zoned TC and R four. And they are requesting CZ TC and CZ R four. Uh, they're changing the boundary of the existing TC zoning line, uh, to accommodate more of a centralized commercial area. And that's really the, the only change with the zoning.
When did it get the R four zoning? I'm assuming the farm wasn't always R four.
Yeah, so when it was originally annexed, um, Jeff may help me with this because he was part of our team. It was originally annexed as R one. And then when we updated and adopted the land development code and our new future land use map in two thousand and twenty-one, the designation was changed to TC and R four.
That's correct. That was in twenty-one.
That is correct.
I'm wondering if the density of this housing is in line with the intent of the R four.
Yeah, so the, the density for the proposed R four area is, uh, four point two nine units per acre with the overall density of the site at six point seven nine units per acre. And so the, the twenty twenty-one land use for the medium density residential costs for that three to five.
So one of the little things I just want to highlight, I was doing some quick calculations. Seven hundred and fifty-nine units, assuming three people per unit is a ten percent increase in the population of Waxall. And one piece of land right on top of downtown. Like a big fat gorilla sitting on top of your back. That's what this is going to look like. So I'm just wondering if, if this is what people intended when they made it R four. And because I know we have the, the upside, so you can go all the way up to five with these large zonings. But with the number of apartments, four hundred and twenty multifamily units, that's a ungodly number of apartments right on top of the downtown. They're all going to end up going to Parkwood. And in order to get to Parkwood, they're all going to go downtown. I, I think that's something we all need to keep in mind as we look at this project and we look at this piece of land. Its impact will be tremendous in the traffic and the flow through downtown. Both with kids getting to schools and with people getting to and from work.
And when that was changed to an R four, was that from the landowner's request or is that just something we did as a town based on when we changed our maps or?
Yeah, I believe we did it from the perspective of the town. At that time, we had kind of a concept plan from another developer. And so we kind of mimic their, their line of development as it seemed to kind of fit within the downtown, but also give, uh, greater density to have that more walkable, compact living for the howie.
But there were no ex- concessions extracted from the developer at that time, correct?
Correct.
When we did that zoning of the town, we matched what the twenty sixteen land use plan had for it with the zoning at the three to five units per acre. So that's why it's there in that fashion. And I, it's just typically planning practice too, to have acre lots at a base of the downtown either.
But the town, the downtown is currently surrounded by, you know, half quarter acre lots. Not surrounded by, it's not currently surrounded by town homes. There are apartments now, but yeah, when you talk about the original character of, of Waxall and preserving that, it just, just begs the question, is it necessary?
Yeah, I think, uh, the planning board chair actually described this as a marquee property. You know, this is the property that we see as soon as we drive into Waxall. Gives sort of a farm characteristic as you drive in. So, yeah. It's the most visible property.
Yeah, that is correct.
What was the, um, reasons that the planning board said it was not consistent with the twenty twenty-one plan? Did they give detailed?
Yeah, so the specific for the motion was about the density that it exceeded that kind of three to five units per acre designation. Um, also discussed was the number of multifamily units. Um, the lack of park space or dedicated space for the town. Um, those were really the big three.
So how far off are we from that three to five number?
Um, about one point seven nine units per acre over.
Over five.
Correct. Yes.
Over the higher.
But nowhere near three.
Correct.
Just to be clear.
Can this property still be developed by their, um, developer even if we, um, deny this request?
That is correct. So they would, they would be, uh, not allowed to submit another conditional rezoning request that is similar in nature. Um, but they could do a buy right product.
And would that add additional units? So could that possibly add additional units onto the property?
It could be pretty comparable. It could be a little more, a little less, um, just depends on how they lay it out. The, uh, I think in, in theory, the commercial wouldn't be as centralized. And then it would be more spread out with, uh, lower story commercial and then upper story apartments through a lot of the TC zone area.
Some more, more housing.
Potentially.
If it was all by right though, a hundred and eleven acres at R four with the density bonus, that's five hundred and fifty-five homes. So.
Just for the R four.
But just for the R four.
We're not obligated, we're not obligated to allow apartments in the TC. That's our choice.
Right, but just by right, they could add additional housing.
They can't.
Add more than that five fifty-five number based upon other things that they could do, which could potentially lead up to an additional hundred units possibly more.
In, in theory, again with this.
In theory.
Theory plan. Uh, the R four would likely stay pretty comparable minus the delineation of the, the proposed TC line to accommodate for the multifamily. The TC portion, you could do a buy right of commercial on the bottom and apartments on the top.
At what density, at what level? But that still comes before the board and it still has to be approved.
If it's by right, it wouldn't come to the board.
No, it wouldn't come before the board.
So.
They, they could do a, yeah, they could do a major subdivision request, which comes to the board, but it's more of a checklist review to where it meets the ordinance or it doesn't. And so they could do that for the R four and plat out the streets needed for the TC zoning area and then come back with construction documents for the TC zone area.
Correct. And how many do we think we'd put in the TC? I mean.
Again, what as a theory, uh, you know?
I mean, because it's still coming before the board, the board still has to approve. So would the board be willing to approve a three-story apartment building? Or could they just come in and say, okay, we're making a ten-story apartment building? So you're, you're saying if we don't allow this, then they can come back by right and make even more.
No, the question was, could they do that?
That's, that's, that's basically.
Could, could they do that?
Exactly.
I think the answer is yes, they could.
The answer is yes, they could, but the question is, would they end up making more than seven hundred and fifty-nine homes? Would they make more than seven hundred and fifty-nine residents?
So the, the gr- ground up apartment developments do require conditional zoning. But in the TC or, uh, MS districts, they are by right if there is retail on the ground floor. So that's, that's the difference.
What are the limitations then on the size of that type of unit?
It'd be the height restriction of the, uh, of the three stories.
They would be, if it was just the amount of TC they currently have and they're building it by right, you're going to have to have businesses on the ground floor by right, which means you're going to have to allow parking for the residents and for the businesses because that just makes good sense. There is a certain amount of that topographically that doesn't develop very well. So, and then what's our limit then on the height of an apartment building? Does it have to be as tall as they say or is it as tall as we say?
Under conditional, it could be as tall as you say.
So it could be as high as six?
Not in this district now.
Well, that, that's what I'm asking. So by right, how tall can they make an apartment with retail on the bottom?
Yeah, it would be three stories.
It'd be three stories. So that'd be one story of?
Commercial.
Commercial and two stories of?
Correct.
Correct. So I don't know what the numbers on that would be. But I doubt it would be over seven hundred and fifty-nine if the rest was, if the rest was developed R four. And again, if you've got retail, you're going to have to have parking. If you've got the apartments, you're going to have to have parking. So that's going to consume some of this land, a, a good portion of this land. If you were paying attention at the DeWitt presentation, it was over three quarters of the land that was consumed by parking and by roadway access. So in other words, I would, I would put my money on say, this is all the TC you get. You make the apartments the way you want to make them, buy right with retail on the ground, have them by the road and provide all the necessary parking. And I bet you end up with less than seven fifty-nine.
And if, um, if they just do the R four and if they bring it in as a major subdivision plat, they still have to do, um, percentage of parkland and tree save, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so conditional zoning is more of a, a give and take where you make conditions where maybe they can't make something work on the site. So for example, a buy right R four, you would have to meet thirty percent tree save, period. So there wouldn't be any conditions on that. Um, but then it, then it's by right. So I mean, it's just.
I'd be tempted to see what the buy right looks like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll, um, this man standing behind me is Brady Finkley with Kimberly Horn and he's ready to talk about traffic.
I have a question on that too.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Uh, thank you for having me here tonight. Brady Finkley with Kimberly Horn. As Madison mentioned, uh, we are contracted with the town to perform the TIA on behalf of the town for, um, uh, for this project. And so, um, tonight, I, my, my goal is to basically give you a high level summary of this very large and long complicated report, um, in case you did not have the time to read through it in detail. Um, I will try my best to sort of stay high level as much as possible, but there are a lot of complexities to the project. Um, but I am, my goal is to be transparent, to, to be open and answer all your questions that you need to be able to make an informed decision. And so please stop me as we go through here and ask questions. I'm, I will welcome. So I think most of you or maybe all of you were here in the fall when I kind of gave an overview of the town's process and sort of what a TIA is and how, um, the town's policy is unique to the area. Um, and so, um, in the interest of time and recommendation of Mr. Miller, I'm going to skip through that unless you have questions. I'm happy to go through that. So, or fine, I will skip right through that and go straight to Emerson Park. Um, I, I do like to kind of start with this, just sort of, um, ground level said what the purpose of a development TIA is. The purpose of it is to evaluate and identify the incremental impacts caused by the proposed development on the surrounding transportation system and then to identify mitigation to offset those incremental impacts. So the purpose is not necessarily to correct existing deficiencies. But as we, as you'll see, we kind of walked through and kind of, uh, put the TIA together in accordance with town and NCDOT policies and guidelines to be able to identify what the proposed projects impacts are, isolate them and then identify the mitigation for them. All right. So the Emerson Park TIA, just some journal notes here. The TIA thresholds, uh, were clearly met for both the town of Waxall and NCDOT. The analysis of mitigation was based on the town's and NCDOT's requirements, uh, based off the town's TIA policy, NCDOT's policy as well as NCDOT's TIA guidelines. Um, we had a number of agencies involved in both the TIA scoping and the review and approval, including the town, NCDOT, both the local office and then also congestion management, which is in Raleigh. Um, they were, uh, they are a key player in this particular area because as you know, there's a lot of projects, funded projects through the state that are, uh, that overlap with the study area, which we'll talk through. Um, so they are currently, um, they're currently reviewing, we've gotten through the preliminary approval and we're currently waiting for their final, um, recommendations that come from congestion management. Uh, we did look at the TIA in three phases, but I'm going to kind of isolate those into two separate buckets. So the first bucket being phase one and phase two, um, based off of direction from the applicant when we first started scoping this TIA. We looked at phase one and phase two being before the U fifty-seven sixty-nine project, which is the NC sixty widening, which of course you know that would have had a lot of capacity, much needed capacity. And then looked at phase three being built after, um, after U fifty-seven sixty-nine is constructed. Um, it is important to note that when we first started scoping this DIA back in, um, I think the fall, maybe early winter of last year, the site plan was a little bit different than what was currently shown tonight. Um, we looked at, uh, slightly higher number of residential units and commercial than what is currently being proposed. But we still move forward with the TIA, um, recognizing that the proposed density was lower than what the TIA, um, was based off of. All right. So I'm going to walk through, uh, here just kind of later. This is basically a, a TIA, a traffic impact analysis in a nutshell. We will go out there, we'll collect existing counts, understand what the existing conditions is. We will project those volumes up to future, call it background conditions. So we're going to project the volumes up to the future conditions without the site. And then we will layer the site on top and we'll compare those two scenarios to identify what their impacts are and then identify mitigation based off of that. So we started out with the existing conditions. Here you'll see the study area, um, it incorporates, uh, much of the, the downtown area. It goes east all the way over to Old Providence. It goes west, um, over to the future Waxall Parkway or Helms Road extension that will be, that's currently being constructed by NCDOT on NC seventy-five. Um, and it goes north up to Olive Boulevard.
Just real quick, I'm sorry to interrupt, but is there going to be, it, with the plat that we currently look at, does it include connection to Blythe Mill Road?
To Blythe Mill, yes.
So the, that's what fourteen is here. So this development would exit at two, at a light, a four-way basically at Blythe Mill Road. Is that the idea?
Yeah, so number four there, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I, I saw on one of the other graphics, it looked like the roads didn't quite connect, so I just wanted to.
I saw that too. So that's one of the recommendations we have in the TIA is to actually realign. Um, if you're, if you're familiar, Blythe Mill kind of comes in at angle.
Yeah.
Realigning that to ninety and lining them up.
Line them up. Okay. Thank you.
Um, so we collect accounts, uh, last year, both in May and October, combination of, 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 um, intersections, um, two thousand and twenty-three. And you can see the study intersections there. And then we project that up, um, we project volumes up, um, and grow those volumes really in two different buckets. One is a non-specific growth and that's more of a generalized, um, growth per year. And that, uh, we identified as one and a half percent. And then we layer on top of that separately, specific growth from specific approved developments, which as you know, there's a number of approved developments in the area that we'll show in just a minute, which, um, I think there were seven approved developments we included in the study. So then that equaled to about six to seven percent growth per year that was accounted for in the traffic study. And we look at growth up to two thousand and twenty-seven, which was their first phase of the year. And then that equals about three to four percent per year when we look at two thousand and thirty-two, which was their phase three.
And just to highlight a comment you just mentioned there, so these TIA's are including all the periphery developments outside of this.
That's right. The idea is try to project conditions up to what in a snapshot in time when we're doing the TIA, what we know the, uh, future conditions will be. Here are the seven approved developments that we included. As you'll see cottage park. Here are the seven approved developments that we included. As you'll see Cottage Park, um, over to, starting from the west Cottage Park, uh, Roan Creek Station, which is currently being built, preserved down to the south. Um, over to the east is the Roger Prons Development, Seven Hills, and then, uh, the Blythe Mill Town Homes and Old Town Village, um, just in the east. We talked about a number of TIP projects in the area, which is a really good thing. Um, there are a lot of identified funded projects in the area, which is great. Uh, so we did, uh, account for those within the project study area. The first one being P fifty-seven forty-eight, which is the, um, the Helms Road. Basically a realignment of that, um, taking it, crossing over the railroad tracks over seventy-five and tying in. Um, and then also putting a roundabout in at Helms Road and Waxall Marvin Road. Currently that's scheduled for construction through twenty-twenty-seven. Second one being the roundabout at Old Providence and, um, and NC seventy-five. In the current SIP, it's, it's currently, uh, funded for construction for three years. Latest I've heard, my understanding is that NCDOT's intent is to try to, try to knock that out within a summer period, whether that's gonna be the summer of twenty-six or the twen- summer of twenty-five. I don't think they figured that out yet, but, um, try to limit the time span of impacts and try to knock it out when school's out. Third one being, uh, HL zero, the one-one-five, which is the Broome Street widening downtown between Church Street and, uh, and NC seventy-five and, and, um, most significantly, I would say from a capacity standpoint, it includes the eastbound left, which is much needed, coming from NC seventy-five to turn north to go on Broome Street. And finally, uh, included in the phase three was the E fifty-seven sixty-nine, the, the four-lane widening from Ray Road Extension all the way down to Waxall Parkway. Alright, so side access. Ignore what the site plan looks like here. Again, the site plan has evolved a bit, um, since we started TIA. Um, but most notably, the side access, the external access points have, um, more or less stayed the same, and then the density has gone down for TIA purposes. Here are the, um, phase one side access, uh, locations that we assumed. Here that Mayor, uh, discussed, this will be realigning Blythe Mill and tying it in. Um, the second one being a connection at Waxall Marvin, and then a direct connection, uh, to downtown. I believe Madison mentioned this, but, uh, this connection here to Peyton Court would be a pedestrian-only connection, non-mechanical. Phase two, we have a couple other connections to the future villages at Waxall, and then also a, uh, direct connection in behind the, uh, Allo Lindsay Center, which gives you indirect access to Waxall Parkway. And finally, phase three, it would be, uh, when this commercial comes in, it would be a right-in, right-out access onto, um, onto Broome Street. Here is the, uh, I just provided the, the overall, um, trip generation for the site. And so when you combine all three phases, uh, it totals eight hundred and eighty-one total AM trips, one thousand eighty, eighty-one PM trips, and that is a combination of both in and outs. And then jumping straight to mitigation, um, here are all the intersections that were identified for mitigation. Uh, Madison did mention, um, more than these, the TIA, we looked at internal intersections, because some of those roads will be public roads. I didn't wanna get into discussion about the internal roads in this discussion, since some of the internal roads are, have changed since the TIA. But from an external standpoint, um, these are the intersections that we have identified mitigation for, and they're kinda broken out into phase one and two. You'll see, um, three intersections along the Broome Street corridor. Um, you've got the intersection of North, uh, North Main Streets and Rehoboth, and then also the future intersection adding, uh, turn lane improvement to the future intersection of Waxall Parkway and NC seventy-five. Here is, here are the improvements. Um, I would say, sort of focus your eyes in on, um, the main intersection here, where we, at the, um, Blythe Mill, in the main, um, what we call the access, the Howie Connector, would be, uh, realigning Blythe Mill Road, adding a signal there, and adding turn lane improvements. Um, and then we have a right turn lane, um, that would be constructed off of Howie Mine Road at Broome Streets. And then the, um, there was mitigation identified at the NC sixteen and seventy-five intersection. Recognizing that that project has now been funded and actually has recently been, um, accelerated by a year, which is great, in the stip funding. Um, it made sense to, uh, have a payment in lieu go towards that project to allow the, the, the town to pay for their portion of that project, um, versus going in there, putting in some improvements, ripping them out, and then putting in the state's project. Let's see where else. So there will also be a left turn lane off of North Main Street onto Rehoboth. Um, if you're familiar with that location, there's a very short distance in between, uh, North Main Street and South Main Street on Rehoboth. And so the traffic sort of backs up here. It's kinda hard to turn left sometimes, and, um, with no turn lanes, it does block the traffic that is coming out of downtown Waxall Marvin. So that would sort of allow those left turners to get out of the way, allow traffic to, to continue moving on. Uh, we have turn lane improvements at their access location, Waxall Marvin, and then also the right turn lane, as I mentioned, the future intersection. And then in phase three, we have additional improvements as well, and, um, we have those listed here as well. I am happy to go in as much or little detail as you all want to on each intersection, how we came up with that, on the mitigation, what the impacts were, what the considerations were. We have extra slides. But I'm gonna stop there and just allow you to ask questions if you want to, or happy to move forward with it as well.
Thank you.
Did you say that the intersection there was expedited by a year at sixteen and seventy-five?
Accelerated by a year.
Accelerated, okay. That's good news. That, you rarely hear that.
Yes.
Any questions from the board? Okay, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can everybody hear me okay? Good evening, Mayor Murray and the, um, Commission. Uh, also, good evening to Waxall staff members who are here tonight. Most importantly, good evening to the Waxall residents who are here, and for those of you who are, um, watching online. Uh, my name is Rob Kreischer, and I am with Jones Homes. I'd like to introduce our team to you tonight, and then, um, talk to you for about four or five minutes. Um, tonight we have Mark Kine and Mason Greason. They are with, they are with C R C, C E C, and they are our engineers for the project. We also have John Carmichael and Aaron Hout with Robinson Bradshaw. And they are our land to, land use attorneys for the project. So we have everybody here to hopefully answer any questions you may have. Um, what I wanted to do tonight was give you a brief description of where, how we got to tonight's meeting, so that you would understand the history that we've been through with the project. In fall of two thousand twenty-two, we began negotiating with the Howies to purchase the Howie Farm, which is roughly a hundred and ten acres of property. We negotiated through till May of, um, twenty-three and went under contract. And in November of twenty-three, we began purchasing the Howie Farm. While we were going through the negotiations and the contract due diligence time period, um, we'd had several meetings with staff, um, to understand what the existing zoning was on the property, as well as what the vision for the town is. Um, what we learned, which you've already heard, is that, um, it's a combination of retail, multi-family, single-family, and townhomes are allowed on the prop- property. Um, from there, what I did was I started setting up meetings with staff. He was probably tired of seeing me. I also got input from staff regarding their meetings with the Board of Commissioners, two-by-two meetings. I met individually with town people, town members who live here, to understand what they wanted. And in November, we had a, um, community meeting at, um, I think I'm saying this right, at Parties here in Waxall that was attended by roughly fifty people. Um, we videoed the, um, meeting so that it could be viewed by everybody who wasn't there, who wasn't able to attend the meeting. What I really wanted to do was, during those meetings, understand what people wanted and to see how many, what I can and cannot meet. Let me run through some of the things that we heard, um, over that time period. Um, I heard we wanted more walking trails. We've accommodated that in this site plan. Um, I was, I heard we wanted more, a couple more small pocket parks, and let me define what that is for everyone. A pocket park generally, we consider somewhere about a half acre or less. It's, um, used for, by the community for various reasons. We usually put, um, benches in there, and there are trees. Um, in our other communities, we find families use it for picnics, dogs, that dog walking, that type of thing. So we added a couple more pocket parks to the community. We were asked to donate, um, land that would potentially be used for an outdoor amphitheater, which we would work with in conjunction with staff to, um, determine what they wanted on that property. One of the things that I heard was that I kept hearing the word neighborhood, community, mixed-use community. Neighborhood, mixed-use community. And one of the things I heard from people was, we don't want big boxes for the retail. And what we, in our business, define as a big box is roughly thirty thousand to forty thousand square feet. Um, to give you an idea what that means, um, the grocery store is roughly forty thousand square feet. So we kept hearing from the residents, or I kept hearing from the residents I met with, was to limit the size of the stores and offices and restaurants, the square footage that is going into that community, the retail part of the community. So it became a neighborhood community center, where there were shops and restaurants, specialty shops, and not big boxes to take away the community feel of the neighborhood. We've agreed to do that, um, and we'll work with staff, as well as, um, the Board of Commissioners, to put whatever number that you would want, if you wanted it, twelve thousand five hundred square feet, which is the number we kinda hear people saying, or ten thousand square feet. But that's something that we feel like maintains a community for the retail part of the, um, of the project. We also are, Madison, uh, touched on this a little earlier. The arborist that we will work with, we will have one, um, the forestry service will have, the county forestry service, as well as the town will have one. Um, what we've identified to add to the, to the, um, project is it's over five hundred and fifty new trees will go into the community. Um, the last thing we heard from was our neighbors on, um, Peyton Court, who asked us to provide a buffer, landscape buffer, between our, between their development, between their neighborhood and our development, which we have done, we've agreed with. And also, they asked us to make sure that the connection on Peyton Court stopped, stayed where it is in their neighborhood and not go through, which we completely agree with, and that's on our site plan, to honor that request from them. So while we can't give everything, I've, all the things I've outlined there, we've agreed to do all that. I will tell you that the one thing that I was asked to do at the, um, community meeting was to include a lighted driving range for golf balls. I will tell you, I said no to that. So I did say no to that request. Um, finally, last two things, um, how did we get the name Emerson Park? Mr. Jones, his name is Peter Emerson Jones, is in his late eighties and started Jones Homes in nineteen fifty-nine. We are sixty-five years old. We are private builder. Why, why does that make, mean anything to you folks? Because what we do, unlike our competitors who are national builders, we were able to design the homes that go in all of our different projects. We don't go in and take a group of designs off the shelf that are cookie cutter and slide them into a project. We'll actually design product for this project, keeping in mind that we wanna use the farmhouse as a, as the project theme for all of Emerson Park. So with the key employees at, at Jones Homes got together, and, um, we call Mr. Jones a gentleman's gentleman. And we wanted to provide a legacy for him. And in honor of him, he's eighty-nine years old, still goes to work every day. Um, we have offices in Orlando, Union County, and the United Kingdom. So that's how we got the name Emerson Park. And finally, one of the things that we wanted to do is, the Howie family has lived on the property for over a hundred and sixty-five years. We asked them if we could name, how, how, what we could do to name some of the things in honor of that, their family. What they've asked us to do is, once the project is approved, is to, when we go to name the roads, they would like to honor families who have worked on their farm through the years. And we'll use their, those names to, um, honor and, um, the Howie, Howie family who've just, who've been a wonderful stewards in the town of Waxall. So I thank you for that. I just wanted, I meant for it to be brief. Go ahead and, um, thank you, and I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, John and Mark.
Thank you very much. I'm John Carmichael. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight about this rezoning request. Um, I'm gonna provide, I'll be very brief, I promise you. I'm gonna provide a brief overview of the rezoning request and discuss what we at least believe are some of the benefits of this conditional rezoning request. Then Mark will review the site plan and other matters related to the rezoning request. So this is, uh, a map of the site. It just shows you the existing zoning. So approximately, uh, twenty-four point seven acres of the site, uh, are currently zon- is currently zoned town center, and it's here in purple. And then approximately eighty point eighteen acres of the site is currently zoned R four, single-family residential. So once again, you've got the R four here to the west, and then you've got the town center to the east in purple. Permitted uses in the town center zoning district include general retail, office, medical, restaurants, and upper-story, multi-family dwelling units, as you previously heard tonight. Permitted uses in the R four zoning district include single-family detached homes, and then single-family attached townhomes. And the maximum density in R four is four units per acre, but it can go up to five if it's a cluster subdivision. So this is the proposed zoning. So you see this dash line here? That represents the current zoning line, the demar- point of demarcation between the R four and the town center. So the purple, if the rezoning request were to be approved, would be CZ TC, that CZ Town Center. And then the, the whatever color this is, I really don't know. It's a kind of brownish-orangeish. Uh, it would be CZ R four. And so the town center portion would contain about twenty-nine point three acres. The R four portion contained just under, um, seventy-six acres. So the request is to change the rezoning line, or the zoning line, between the R four and the town center zoning to increase that portion of the site that's zoned town center by four point six acres, then to have a resulting, uh, decrease, or course-cutting decrease, uh, in the R four area of four point six acres. And then this is just the existing future land use under the current zoning of the site. This would be the downtown, uh, portion that's currently zoned town center, and the medium-density portion that's currently zoned R four. If the rezoning requests were approved, once again, this is the current zoning line or point of separation between the town center zoning district and the R four zoning district. If this rezoning request were to be approved, then you've got the medium-density here in yellow, and then the downtown portion here in blue. Uh, the pri- the primary purpose of the request is to accommodate the mixed-use development that Mr. Kine is gonna describe in a moment. I will say that the, uh, R four portion has a density of about four point two seven units an acre, which is consistent with the R four zoning. Once again, it's a conditional rezoning request, and we think some of the benefits of that include the fact that with a conditional rezoning request, you have a site plan. So if the rezoning is approved, you know how it's gonna be developed. And then there are other conditions that you can be sure will be met, because they'll be part of the plan. That includes the max density, that includes open space, that includes capping the size of retail users in the town center so as to avoid big boxes. Those would not be conditions that could be opposed. Those would not be conditions that could be opposed under a buy-right scenario, obviously. Um, another benefit is that the multifamily units have been moved to the northern portion of the site adjacent to existing commercial zoning. Another benefit is that there's a vision book that's part of the rezoning request that has architectural uh and conceptual images of the buildings and structures that would be a part of the mixed-use development, and those would serve as a guide for the development of the site. Therefore, if you like the vision book, then you can be assured that it's going to be an aesthetically appealing development. And then the conditional rezoning plan also caps the density. And so, as Mr. Kim will tell you, the, the density proposed under this rezoning plan is actually less than what could be developed by right. So, those are what we perceive as some of the benefits, reasonable minds can certainly differ, um, but just wanted to make you aware of that. And then I'm gonna ask Mr. Kim if you would mind to go through the site plan briefly. Thank you.
Hi, so my name is Mark Kim, I'm a landscape architect with Civil Environmental Consultants, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Thank you for having us here tonight. Um, regarding our first early meetings with town staff, we really looked at and discussed, you know, the TC zoning component of this project and how do we create a walkable district, you know, from downtown, that really starts to pull people up to this area of the site up along North Broom Street and make a connection that this whole loop here, I mean, we're talking maybe it's about a quarter mile, um, and how do we really cater to pedestrians with this type of project? One of the things that we really wanted to emphasize with this project was, you know, reliance on the eventual completion of Waxahaw Parkway to the west, that we did not want this project to act as some sort of speed cut through. Now, there's a very circuitous way that you can get through the site, but by no means would I ever call it direct. We uh, we plan to include a number of traffic calming measures such as speed tables, uh, just the circuitous nature of it, on-street parking, you know, this, this development is really focused on emphasizing pedestrian use. There's always going to be a vehicular component to it, but the way we've designed it is with the intent of the pedestrian. Um, as regarding to some of the other points that came up earlier, especially with the other projects regarding parking, this current plan, uh, with the multifamily that we have shown up here, we're currently parked at one point seven. And one of the reasons um we're not looking at the two units per acre, it just, the one, between one point five, one point seven falls in line with a lot of the other projects that we've done. We feel what we don't want to do is build more asphalt for parking that we don't need. Um, we've done a number of multifamily projects and we just feel that's within the realm of what seems to be an acceptable ratio. I know the city of Charlotte's apartments is one point five. Um, I've seen towns and outline areas have a little bit higher, you know, who do a lot less multifamily, so it is a bit of a give and take. Um, as Rob alluded to, this site plan, the largest store or largest commercial buildings that we're showing currently are about eight to ten thousand square feet. Just to give you a comparison, a pharmacy is about fourteen thousand square feet. So, we are really looking for small, local, um, you know, artisan crafts, uh, restaurants, retail spaces, you know, small, leaseable spaces that can be blocked off as small as twelve hundred square feet. So, it really caters to local um commercial user. As John mentioned, the vision book, we uh, we took a look at the character of downtown. We took a look at, you know, the agrarian history of the Waxahaw area as well as the urban mill history, and really wanted to infuse, fuse those two ideas together to really govern the vision book that we created for this project. And as John alluded to, that really becomes a governing document that staff can use if any project comes in, even if it's, if part of this project, five years down the road, if it's not in line with the vision that's outlined in this book, it's probably, probably doesn't have a stand, uh, sorry, does not have a chance to be approved. Um, this gives them some leverage as far as architectural controls beyond what is in the ordinance. We want to create a place, again, focused on pedestrian lifestyle, someplace where the idea of live, work, play, um, where there's a lot of internal capture, which is why we have the amount of residential units that we do have. It supports the hundred and twenty thousand plus commercial that we're proposing for this area. Uh, if you've ever been over to like Sun Valley Commons where you have a large commercial area of no residential, you have a lot of empty pads that have been vacant for upwards of twenty years. Um, commercial really needs that residential component as a catalyst to really spur the development. Granted, there's a, there will be traffic from Providence Road, but without internal residents that can use that, walk to that, um, and utilize that space, it's really hard to see commercial taking off. So, that is really the catalyst for the inclusion. So, we, we, what we want to do is focus on creating a number of green spaces, outdoor play spaces, um, and I'll start going through some of the graphics that we have here as we move through the site. But this is coming in off of North Broom Street, um, with the street frontage where you have a lot of high-end materials. Again, you can start to see some of the, the architecture. Uh, while it's conceptual, it again, gives a guide to what's going to eventually go here in terms of controls. We're, we're looking at all one-story to one-and-a-half-story uh commercial uses. We've got a number of, I think sixteen live-work-in units that are interior to the site, uh, wide sidewalks, pedestrian-friendly, where you can have, you know, outdoor markets and venues and outdoor cafes and seating. Um, we can add landscaping to create, you know, again, more pedestrian safety from vehicular traffic, the traffic calming measures. In the middle of this uh retail space, we're looking at creating a large green angle parking of both sides, you can kind of see the facades in the background, really start to mimic some of the architecture that you see in downtown Waxahaw. The idea with this space, we've got speed tables on both ends, is this is a programmable space for the entire community. You can close this off and you can have farmers' markets or Christmas markets or any kind of outdoor community event that could really maximize the use of this space. And this is just one of the many green spaces we have throughout this project, but this one is central focus uh towards the retail component of the project. At the end of that green space, we're looking at what we're calling the social anchor, just because there's been a lot of discussion about what this will ultimately be. Is it going to be a combination of um vendor areas or brew hall or restaurants? Um, but again, the architecture needs to reflect that character. You can see the speed table here, in this case, bollards, again, protecting pedestrians, protecting families with kids. You know, this, this whole development will be a very low-speed development. Um, I would think anything in the retail area, we're talking fifteen miles an hour, maybe in the residential upwards of twenty-five, but that's it. The idea is really focused on pedestrians. Throughout other portions of the project, we've got other plaza areas where you could have small um vendor kiosks, coffee shops, ice cream shops, where you can have, you know, varying seating elements, shade structures, and, and these are interspersed throughout the entire project. We can also introduce certain elements that were identified as uh desirable by both staff and residents, such as elevated water towers, silos, grain, other things that can be converted as, you know, an homage to the history of the town. As Rob mentioned, we're going to have a number of pedestrian walkways throughout, throughout the site. We've got the, the ten-foot asphalt walking trails that are going to connect in several locations, as well as a number of five-foot, five-foot wide crush-and-run trails. And then we talked about the amphitheater, so this, if I go back to the site plan real quick. Where's the, top? Oh, there we go. So, one of the things that came out of our meetings with planning board and staff was, originally we had some retail here, they really wanted to see some sort of central green anchor to this entire project. Um, and leading in here and having this, this is the internal capture area where we could have possible marketplace, here's your anchor space here. This starts to really tie this whole central area together with some of the multifamily here, with some of the townhomes, and then definitely the commercial. Um, so the idea is to create a level programmable space, and then we came up with the idea of the amphitheater as you back down to the creek, because the natural great just really lends it well for that. So, you could create, you know, this central focal point here for all, for all pedestrian, or for all uh residents of the community, as well as the community beyond. So, you can see the size of this space is a little over an acre, um, but you know, an acre feels pretty large once you start looking at it in the context of an urban environment. So then, um, lastly, I'm going to talk about phasing. So, you know, obviously, there's a lot of improvements that Brady outlined as part of this project. This project's not going, if approved, is not going to come online all at once, uh, couldn't possibly. You know, some of the phase-three improvements were tied with the commercial aspects of this project. When we look at and consider phasing of this project, our real first thought is this, making this spine connection here, which at least allows the flexibility for commercial to come, depending on how the market decides, if, if there's more market users that want to come on immediately, this might take off faster than we thought. But from a development side, for Jones, we're more than likely going to start with this phase of construction down here and then start moving north. Now, everything that you see south of this creek here, this all meets the requirements of the R four zoning currently. So, as John mentioned, what we're asking is to change the delineation of that line to allow us to put the multifamily where we feel like it's the best fit for, for the development, and then asking for the ground floor um option. Now, one other request, and I believe you made this request, Mr. Mayor, was um, we actually, we originally had this connection coming across here, but in order to better facilitate traffic in this commercial corridor, we did move this connection, this extension of North Broad Street here that feeds right into the town center area. As far as the, the buy-right plan that was mentioned, we have studied that. Um, we've got about eighty acres that's currently R four, um, which under cluster provisions will allow us to build up to four hundred single-family and townhomes. We've got a layout plan and we can accommodate that. We have looked at the town center zoning, which has a cap of three stories. We would have to park it at the two units per acre, or two units, two spaces per multifamily unit plus four spaces per thousand. In that plan, we actually exceeded the number of units and the, we exceeded the square footage of retail that we have in this plan. The retail exceeded by about one-and-a-half times as much. Um, so, we are able to park it. Um, I don't have it here tonight, but we have studied that, just to know what the comparisons of what we were asking for versus what could be also proposed for the site. We're here asking for this request because we think this is a great plan that really has more and more of the character of downtown, which is what we're making the request.
What was the final number on buy-right?
Buy-right, uh, we had three hundred and sixty-seven multifamily units and four hundred mix of apartments and single, sorry, three hundred and sixty-seven multifamily units and a mix of four hundred townhomes and single-family development.
So, you're still at about seven something?
Seven sixty-seven was the number we landed on, yes.
Okay.
With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Madison, can I ask you something?
Yes.
So, something that I've learned just through my years is we can approve conditional zoning and plans that look really nice, but then they can turn over the built, the developers. Um, just like at Prescott Village that was mentioned earlier, has been changed over three, four times, I don't know, and when it was originally approved, it was supposed to be this quaint English village, and now we, you know, it's a...
Out-parcel development.
Exactly. And so, um, you know, if this were to be approved, that this, uh, this project that looks fitting with the town of Waxahaw and has that farm character that carries over from the Howie farm, and then what if something happens and it's sold? So, how does, how does that transfer to another developer?
Yeah, so, um, if the development team were to go under the, the, I guess, they weren't able to do the project, another developer purchased it, they would have to stick to the plan if they didn't want any major modifications. So, for example, if they were starting to change more than the parameters of our ordinance, it would require another conditional rezoning request for that modification where you guys would see it again, or they could get rid of the plan and do something that's within the parameters of the current zoning. So, they would have those two options. So, it would just depend on, on the new developer, if they wanted to do something different, or if they had different product types, or if they're more of a commercial user versus a residential builder, um, there's really no way to tell what would happen in those
If I may jump in a little bit, this becomes the zoning district. The conditional district is the, is the district. So, ownership has nothing to do with the zoning district. If there's a change in ownership, the zoning district remains the same. Now, if something does happen and a new purchaser wants to do something different, it's to, even if it was by right, if you wanted to do something different, they would have to come back before this board, before either a change in conditions or a new zoning district altogether. So, ownership has nothing to do with whether this remains in effect or not. So, a new purchaser would have to build it just like this or get a change in the conditions or zonings, which this board would sit on and judgment on that.
Thank you, John.
Commissioner Russell, were you speaking to the quality of the development as well?
Well, I, when, when they showed the vision board, um, you know, it's, it's a very nice-looking plan, um, but we just have to remember that this is all about the zoning. It could always be something different.
Well, that's the same question I asked on the DeWitt. Um, will all these commercial properties, as well as apartments, be, will they be corporate-owned, or will they be sold off as condominiums to business owners?
If I may speak, I know, uh, they have someone in mind for the multifamily who would retain the ownership of all of it, and then I, the commercial, I would defer.
You know, the, um, to the multifamily developer that we have, um, been working on the project with, is, they're located here in Charlotte, they're the two thousand and twenty-one National Multifamily Developer of the Year. We've done a number of product, projects in the Charlotte area. And regarding your question on the um, commercial retail, I've got, I've received a number of calls from, I mean, commercial developers. I know what I don't know, and that's I don't know anything about developing a commercial retail site. Um, my answer to all of them has been that I'm not going to talk to them till I know what I've got, because I really don't know what I have yet. Um, my sense is that they will develop and keep the retail units. There are three office buildings on this project, on this project. Um, again, this is my sense, is that they will sell those, the office buildings off to people. I will tell you that the first tenant has already spoken up for one, and that is Jones Homes, removing our offices and our permanent designs in there. So, I, I, I'm not trying to be nebulous on the answer, it's, it's just my sense is what they'll do.
I just, I'll, I'll just speak more plainly about that topic. It's, it's something we need to consider when we look at these large types of developments, both from a business standpoint, or both from a business development standpoint, as well as a sort of high-density apartment standpoint, is you're basically taking land in the town of Waxahaw and allowing large corporations to buy and control that land rather than residents. And I think that's something that we should carefully consider as a board. Okay, so, at this point, we'll open it up to public comments. We had two people signed up for public comments. If they're still here, we have June Mathias.
Mayor and Commissioners and those residents and others here, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Um, I was at the neighborhood meeting in November, and as a result of that meeting, one of my largest concerns is with traffic, and I'm thinking of the Highway sixteen, and I saw the dates up that it's projected nineteen, excuse me, twenty, twenty-nine to thirty-two for the date of that, and then also for Waxahaw um Parkway Extension going off there to the west, and that it'll be some time before those roads are completed, and I think there'll be a lot of um additional vehicles and traffic and congestion if, if all the residential units are occupied. So, in short, my concern is about the traffic. So in short, my concern is about the traffic.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Mary Lou Romano.
I wanna say a couple of things that a couple of commissioners said back when they were either campaigning or were there afterwards. Growth isn't just about bigger, it's about better. Let's plan for a future that enhances our community charm and livability. That'd be you, Mr. Hall. Imagine a county where traffic flows smoothly and schools are centers of excellence. This vision can be our reality with thoughtful growth planning, Mr. Hall. The cost of inaction is too high. Without planning for growth, we risk our children's education, our daily commute and our overall quality. Uh, Ms. Westlick says, uh, maintaining communication and transparency with their constituents. Her goal in an office is to maintain the small town feel of Waxaw while using smart, smart growth plans. I'm not gonna get up here this evening and go in depth as to the reasons why Emerson Project, the DeWitt, should not be approved. I think that the planning board already understands why and explained the, there are unfavorable recommendations as well as the reasons previously talked about in the Gramre zoning. You have repeatedly been presented with the reasons not to approve further high density growth. And also there is talk all over social media, mayors of other cities, counties speaking out, schools, roads due to the growth in the western side of Union County. But my hope is if you do approve these projects, that perhaps the residents and the people in the surrounding area can request, request to hold a town hall meeting, a meeting so that you can explain to the people who voted you into the office, who you represent, to those like myself who live in unincorporated Waxaw and had no choice on you being elected, why you keep approving the high density projects. There are discussions everywhere filled with questions, frustrations, anger and distrust, and so much so, people are wishing they could remove people from office. People are even making accusations of this being revenge voting, which I truly hope our city's political atmosphere is not digressed to. People truly do not understand it, and maybe we're missing something that you know that we don't. All I know, when looking back at words, your own words campaigning after winning campaigns, you spoke about approving smart growth, about infrastructure needed to support that growth, and now it seems that you have forgotten those words. But the people who voted you into office have not. I truly hope and pray that you do not approve these projects, but should you, against the majority, that my request is that you put on your calendar to hold a town hall meeting and be brave enough and strong enough to stand before the people you represent and allow the people to ask you questions. And here are how this is smart and the right decisions for Waxaw. Why you're doing it, so perhaps we can understand because we don't see any benefit in it at all for Waxaw or Union County, only for the developers, realtors, real estate investors and the likes. These continued approvals are causing people to even ask what is in it for you? If you continue to approve this high density growth and then find the chaos you helped to create gets too much for you, then maybe you can just easily move on. But many of us planned on living the rest of our lives here. And so we'll be dealing with your decisions and your approvals down the road and perhaps the rest of our lives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Ms. Lisa Thompson on a text amendment.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Um, tonight we have a petition fourteen twenty twenty-four. It's a request by the town of Waxaw to amend Land Development Code chapters one and five. Um, this was a request, um, by the board at our retreat to have, to help, um, plan for Union, for public schools. Um, town staff has met with Union County Public School staff. At this moment, they do not have a school site in, uh, the Waxaw area. However, we believe this text amendment would be a catalyst to, when they do have a site identified, to be able to, um, plan and make a reservation for that school site. In doing this, we also added, um, language about public facilities. This would be any future police or, um, public services, fire site that we identify on our comprehensive land use plan map, um, to be able to then reserve, um, that land for that use for a certain amount of time. So this section one point one one is already in our ordinance. Um, it basically says that if, um, that we have to be consistent with our plans and studies um, and implement infrastructure rights of way and easements. We are adding the bolded language of schools, public facilities, parks and open space to that language. And then section five point four, um, the detailed text is in the staff report. This is just a summary, but basically when there is a school or public facility site identified on a master plan, this gives, um, the town, uh, the ability to, or the, the school board, the ability to reserve that land. Um, basically, if we got a development proposal, uh, we would then contact Union County Public Schools Board or Town Manager. Um, they have thirty days to decide whether or not they wanna move forward with the school reservation. Um, if yes, the preliminary plot would be designed. Um, and after approval, they have eighteen months to go ahead and either purchase, um, that site um, or have it dedicated or initiate, um, condemnation. If that eighteen months expires, um, that land, um, is then open again and loses that rights of reservation. The planning board considered the text amendment on April sixteenth and unanimously recommended approval. Tonight is just the public hearing. I'll be back for action on the, uh, May twenty-eighth meeting. Be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any text similar to this in other municipalities?
Yeah, this was taken from Matthews.
Thank you.
And it's a, it's a close copy of general statute, it's one sixty D, um, eight oh four.
Thank you.
So they have thirty days to reserve the land.
Yes, so if I get a proposal in, an application in, and there's a, an area designated for a public school or say police station, I would notify the board. They have thirty days to say, yes, this is something we would like to, um, move forward with.
Right, and then after eighteen months, then they would purchase that property.
Correct.
And if they don't, then it.
The reservation is gone.
Is gone for the school to have a school in that area.
Correct.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Lisa. We did have public comments, but nobody signed up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, could I get a motion to close this public comment session?
Motion to close public hearings.
Public comment hearings, sorry.
Motion to close public hearings.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings are now closed. We will now move to old business, which there is none, which leads us then to leadership reports. Mr. Wells, what do you got?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just one thing to, uh, report this evening. Just wanted to give you just a very high level, uh, on the, uh, Kaleidoscope Festival and the town tent and the feedback that we received from, uh, residents, uh, and non-residents, uh, at the, at the event. It was great feedback, uh, almost exclusively very, uh, positive on all of the transportation projects that we are, uh, working on and we have invested in. Uh, great, uh, feedback on the, uh, the features and amenities, uh, that we have at the rec barn and then what, uh, we're expected to, uh, to arrive with the learning center. Uh, the transportation boards were obviously the most popular because that's usually what, uh, people show the most interest in. Uh, and of course, they do, uh, understand that the high cost, but I think the biggest complaint or concern is just the time it takes for those to get done, which still is, I think, hard for the general public to understand why these things take so long. And, uh, that's the very broad, uh, feedback that we got. But, uh, anytime that we, we, uh, do those, uh, uh, those town info tents at, uh, Kaleidoscope and at Autumn Treasures and, and a handful of others, we always get very good feedback from the public. So, uh, it's something that we will continue to do whenever we have these festivals or any other events that might, uh, warrant that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Dina Sabinski. Lots of news.
Evening again. Um, so you have a cheat sheet in front of you that gives you all the updates on, um, save the dates for upcoming events and programming. Um, the next one up is Memorial Day, and that is at the Wall of Honor in our downtown. That's May twenty-seventh at ten AM. And then tomorrow is Family Kickball at, um, the Rec Barn for Hero, so please join us there. And of course, look on the website or our Facebook page for the, um, program guide. A new one was dropped next month for July to December, so look forward to that. And I wanted to just say a, a special thank you for all my teammates, um, within the town. Last weekend was magical. And everyone's support, um, to get us to that finish line, I, I just can't say thank you enough. Um, we're still recovering. Um, I'm still, I was yawning in the back because I'm just a little tired, but that is, it was well worth it. And again, thank you for leadership and for y'all, uh, for being there and support. That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a chance to spend some time at Kaleidoscope and at the Downtown Park. Uh, Downtown Park turned out really spectacular. Um, it's, it's definitely, I think, a crown jewel for the town of Waxaw at this point. Um, to have Kaleidoscope there and all the vendors and all the artisans that were there was, was a true pleasure. It was definitely a fun event to, to hang out and spend time. And then everything that was going on, it's North and South Main Street, just, it was a really great weekend, so thank you. Next up is Jenny B. Colts.
Good evening, Jenny Boo Colts for Town of Waxaw Communications. I also represent Haven Creative. We are a private consultant for the town, for those of you that don't know who we are. Um, an internal employee, Tamiya is also here with us today. She's gonna give you a quick social media headline update. So I brought my notes here. Wanted to highlight that last month, our editorial reach was up fifty-nine percent. There were no overwhelming negative news story spikes. News results were mainly driven by Waxaw mentions and positive stories and promotions from local businesses, specifically a tent shop locally, so thank you for all that positive push. Um, we have a news story with Mayor Murray that will be airing tomorrow evening at ten thirty PM. So you'll see that link come out. We spoke with them, it was last Friday, I believe, and that was WCCB. Yes, um, so that's going on. We also have a new to Waxaw video and landing page. If you weren't able to see, we did a town hall forum, first one with Mayor Murray. That is available on the YouTube page if you wanna watch that back. And there is a new resident video, like I said, it's a welcome to Waxaw video, which highlights important links on the website and new landing pages we developed. We had some feedback that some of the B O C resources were hard to find, so we have a new B O C resource landing page, which you can find all of the videos from recent evenings, such as tonight, agendas, minutes, and then even notes from two by two sessions. Our website search is up by sixty-five percent. That's organic search, people searching for Waxaw. Direct traffic is nineteen percent, meaning people are putting in waxaw.com. All of that traffic has led to seventy-eight new submissions on Waxaw happenings. Our subscription list is now up to twenty-five hundred, and our average open rate is forty-six percent, which an average email open rate is normally seventeen, so we're pretty happy to have that. And I'll give, uh, the mic to Tamiya to talk about social media.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, I'm currently working on three large scale projects for social right now to include the HBC Month content. Um, right now, we're doing highlights on HBC, um, committee members and facade grant recipients, as well as Waxaw history facts. And during Kaleidoscope Fest, uh, we debuted the HBC Oral History Month Project Landing Page, which will give residents of Waxaw the chance to share their story by submitting a form on the town's website. And we'll be promoting the landing page starting on social at the end of this week. Um, the second project that I'm working on is Parking Recreation Month content. I'm planning the content to center around the theme of P and R Month, which is where you belong, and we'll be tying it into the Smile Trailer and inclusion with the I A P program. So I'm working with Dina's team on that. And Waxaw Looks Like Me is the third large scale program that I'm working on. It's a ex- expansion, excuse me, of the Waxaw Works Together campaign that Jenny and I are working on. It's a storytelling series on social media that will highlight diverse members of the Waxaw community. And the overall theme of the project is just collaboration with local businesses, schools, community organizations and other institutions to amplify and reach, as well as boosting communicating, communications and engagement for the community. And as of April first, from April first, excuse me, from April first to May fourteenth, we have one hundred twenty-five thousand, um, impressions on all of our social media platforms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least, I forgot to mention, we are doing an emergency management training on Friday, so your entire team will be out of the office, so please, let's hopefully keep it quiet. But we're going through a training with the county, um, and with our staff to be prepared in case of an emergency response happens.
Thank you very much. And Commissioners, any comments, questions?
I do. Okay, well, sorry. Um, I just wanna address something because my name was brought up earlier on a public comment. Um, unfortunately, most of the audience is gone now, but, um, you can look this up on the EPA.gov Smart Growth website. But, um, it was mentioned how I ran on the Smart Growth platform, and I feel like the board and, and designing the L D C used many of these principles. And where these principles should be used the most is in the downtown area. And I'm just gonna go ahead and list to you the, the ten principles and maybe think about that as you've, um, think about these projects that were presented tonight. Uh, number one, mixed land uses. Number two, take advantage of compact building design. Number three, create a range of housing opportunities and choices. Number four, create walkable neighborhoods. Number five, foster distinctive, attractive communities with a strong sense of place. Number six, preserve open space, farmland, natural beauty and critical environmental areas. Number seven, strengthen and direct development towards existing communities. Number eight, provide a variety of transportation choices. Number nine, make development decisions predictable, fair and cost effective. And number ten, encourage community and stakeholder collaboration in development decisions. And so that is what I ran on, and that is what I believe I followed while I've been off, in office. And so I think it's important that when people mention smart growth principles, that does not mean no growth. So just, uh, wanted to make sure everyone was aware of what that truly is. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, just something real quick, which, um, Jenny did not mention when she was up here, so I'll mention it for her, that the Charlotte Mecklenburg Honors, um, they honored six local businesses, and they were the twenty twenty-four Crowns of Enterprise winners, which are business owners. And Haven Creative was one of the winners who was honored. So I wanna say congratulations to our own Jenny and her team for that honor.
Thank you for bringing that up. We did notice that, so definitely congratulations, Jenny, and your, your entire Haven team. Good job. All righty, without further ado, if there's no further comments.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, took the words right out of my mouth. All in favor?
Aye.
We are so adjourned.